I call to order the Johnson and Planning Commission meeting.
Microphone.
This is a tone. I'll pull it down so it can be more audible. Thank you. Uh, meeting, the Johnson and Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 at 5:45 PM. And um, I will turn over to Megan. A reading of our meeting procedures here.
Would you like to do that before roll call?
What's that?
Would you like to do that before the roll call?
No, let's go into the roll call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike Levin is absent. George Lund.
Here.
Jim Neese.
Present.
Chris Iliff.
Here.
Dave Johns is absent. Kelly Rast.
Present.
Roger Mason.
Here.
Lindsay Gersay.
Here.
Randy Downing.
Here.
And Terry Atwell is absent. We have seven members present, so we have a quorum. And now I'll read the hybrid meeting statement. This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. Please note this meeting is being held in the board hearing room with planning commission members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, phone, or other electronic device. Zoom participants chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. If you would like to speak during the public comment section of the meeting or the public hearing, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you wish to speak during the public hearing on the Rural Comprehensive Plan update, please wait to raise your hand until the chair opens the public hearing. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with a previous individual's comments. The chair may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name each time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear you, and so the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. I appreciate that. Would open the meeting at this point to public comments. If there is anyone who is here present as a member of the public that would like to address us, uh, there are two minutes available to you to make comments. Seeing no one, we'll now move to the next item on the uh.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. I do have two written comments that I wanted to note for the record that were, that were received. Uh, both were received from Joyce Woodier. Uh, one was received on 4/3/22, April 3rd, 2022, uh, excuse me, 2023. And another was also, uh, there was a link to a document that was sent by Ms. Woodier on May 22nd, 2023.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Leipzig. I appreciate that. Um, in both cases, I think those comments were sent on to all members of the Planning Commission and had the opportunity to read them and observe them. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, I, item D is disclosure of conflict of interest or ex parte communications by members.
Uh, this is, yep, this is Kelly Rast. I just want to disclose that, um, I had some communications with Commissioner O'Hara regarding shared concerns regarding property owners' rights, which we'll discuss further in the meeting tonight. And then Mike Levin also had called me regarding making sure that it would be brought up tonight since he is unavailable to come, for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Rast. Uh, any other disclosures of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications by members of the Planning Commission? If not, we'll move to the agenda. Are there any suggestions for additions or deletions from the agenda of tonight's meeting? During none, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes. We're going to do this uh, in two separate motions. And that is, we have uh, before us both the meetings of the March meeting and the April meeting. So I would ask first with regard to the March uh, meeting of the Planning Commission, are there any additions, suggestions for amendments, uh, improvements, uh, deletions from the March uh, meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, Jim Neese, I preclude that we approve the minutes of the March meeting.
Sir, a second?
Second. Where's the line? Second.
All right. Mr. Lund has seconded the meeting, uh, approval of the meeting of the March meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. I would then also put before us the uh, for approval of the April 25, 2023 meeting minutes. Uh, are there any suggestions for uh, changes, deletions, omissions, uh, of the April 25, 2023 meeting minutes? During none, do I hear a suggestion for a motion for approval of those meeting minutes? Well, I will move to approve the meeting minutes of the April 25, 2023 meeting. And I would ask if there is a second.
Lindsay Gersay, I second.
Uh, Ms. Gersay has seconded the motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. If not, they will then be approved. The next item on the agenda uh, is with regard to our public hearing tonight, and that is amendments to the county's rural comprehensive plan. I'm going to turn this over to uh, uh, Mr. Leipzig for comment at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig. Uh, just, and I, with that, I will turn it over to Diane Wicklund, who has a report for you this evening.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Wicklund.
I was gonna say something. I thought I had it. All right. Good evening, Diane Wicklund, Planning Department. Um, so I'm gonna go over, uh, just kind of present the uh, proposed amendments uh, to the rural comprehensive plan here tonight, um, uh, that we've been discussing. And uh, just a quick note, um, we, we do have this uh, QR code that we've been putting on some uh, meeting flyers and on the website. Uh, people can scan that and kind of go straight to the website that has all the materials and information from the subcommittee meetings and the public information meetings. Um, so that's pretty helpful to have. So tonight's topic is the proposed amendments to the county's rural comprehensive plan regarding the Sunflower area plan. Uh, the planning area is located within the unincorporated portion of Johnson County. Uh, this is not a rezoning of any property. It is not related to the Panasonic development or any other development located within city limits of DeSoto. There is no road construction or road improvements uh, that are proposed as part of this uh, plan update uh, in this study area. And it is only a future land use update for the study area. So just kind of a quick refresher, um, so what is the rural comprehensive plan? Um, it is only for the unincorporated uh, portion of the county. It defines a plan for what the county will look like in the future. Uh, it is a policy guide that describes in text and maps the county's goals for directing uh, future land uses and development. Uh, it is a foundation for uh, the regulations, uh, but not a legally binding document. And it is also reviewed annually by the Planning Commission. So here's a copy of our uh, current policy area map. Or uh, some people can refer to it as a, our future land use map for the county. Uh, we call it the policy area map. We call it that because if you can see down there on the legend, we have uh, our land use policy areas. We have three of those. That's what we designate as our future land uses. Here is a chart of uh, descriptions of our three policy areas. They are the rural traditional policy area, the rural policy area, and then the urban fringe policy area. This chart just kind of describes in more detail the purposes, purpose of each of those policy areas. However, tonight, uh, we're just going to focus on talking about the rural policy area because that um, uh, that matches up with the recommendation from the subcommittee. Uh, but we can certainly go back and talk about the others if we need to. So the rural policy area, the, the description or purpose of that is uh, is for very low uh, residential density. Uh, one residence uh, per 10 acre minimum. It supports agricultural uses. It maintains existing open space and rural character. And it is also um, kind of in an area where it has limited or incomplete infrastructure in the area. The purpose and use of this policy area map is kind of twofold. One is uh, for uh, staff uses it for inquiries when people uh, come in and ask about potential development. It is one piece of what we look at when we look at uh, a proposed development or proposed use in terms of if it's appropriate or not in a particular area. Uh, and then the second is that we review applications for uh, for golden criteria. One of those golden criteria is to look at our rural comprehensive plan. And then also, um, it is tied to subdivision requirements, and so we have to look at that map for that as well. Uh, that map also has our carnet plan overlaid on top of it. So why update the plan? Um, and we're updating the plan to determine and adjust the appropriate future land uses of the remaining land uh, within the unincorporated uh, portion of the county in this study area, in this northwest area. Uh, we're doing that because of the recent annexation by city of DeSoto. Uh, DeSoto annexed just over one-third of the planned study area. Uh, this equates to roughly 16 square miles out of the 44 square mile study area. Um, it reduced the land area in the study area. And it also uh, is, uh, can keep the comprehensive plan updated and current. So the timeline for the plan update, so last year, um, in August 2022, uh, after annexation by the city of DeSoto, uh, the Planning Commission appointed a subcommittee to review this existing uh, 1998 area plan and uh, of the county and to recommend uh, any changes. And then uh, in October 2022 through February of this year, the subcommittee held five meetings uh, to gather and discuss information, uh, which resulted in a recommendation to the full Planning Commission uh, issued on February 10th of this year. So this year in 2023, March 21st, we held our first public information meeting held by county staff. March 28th, the Planning Commission receives uh, the subcommittee's uh, recommendation in sets of public hearing. Uh, April 19th, we held a second uh, public information meeting held by county staff. I'll get into that in a little bit more detail, but the reason we had a second uh, public information meeting is um, we had such a large turnout at the first meeting, uh, which was great, uh, but didn't anticipate that, so we had a smaller space, so we uh, um, decided to hold a second meeting in a larger place, uh, just so that we can accommodate everybody that's uh, interested in learning about this plan update. Um, and so then that gets us to tonight, May 23rd, um, which is the public hearing uh, that the Planning Commission is holding now to receive comments regarding uh, the proposed amendments to our rural comprehensive plan. So who all has been involved in this process? Uh, the Planning Commission uh, received recommendation from the subcommittee. Uh, you hold the public hearing and forward any recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. County planning staff coordinates and provides information on the plan update. Uh, the public uh, provides input and feedback. Uh, we did that through um, the two information meetings that we held, the public hearing tonight. Um, also have received uh, emails, a, a few emails um, from the public uh, which you have already received, received at the last meeting in your packet. And then finally, the elected officials, which in this case is the Board of County Commissioners, um, and they review and adopt any uh, proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. So back to the public information meetings that we held, so March 21st was the first meeting. Um, and we had over 200 people attend that uh, meeting. That was held at the Timber Ridge Adventure or Adventure Center. Um, and um, and then like I said, we had such a large turnout that um, that we decided we needed to have a second meeting to accommodate everyone. Um, that second meeting happened on April 19th, and it was at the uh, uh, DeSoto High School, and we had approximately 100 people attend uh, that meeting. The main questions and topics that came from those two meetings, uh, one was uh, just kind of explaining the difference between the rural policy area and the future land uses that were designated on this existing 1998 Sunflower area plan. Uh, second is uh, interest, uh, a lot of interest in the carnet plan, which is the comprehensive arterial road network plan. It's kind of the future uh, kind of transportation plan for the county, for the unincorporated part of the county. Um, and it is overlaid um, on top of the policy area map. And the third, there were a lot of questions regarding um, city annexation process and how that works. So again, this is our existing policy area map. It's what it looks like today. Uh, and so the focus of tonight is this pink area. And that's the uh, they called it the committee in the park plan, but um, that area in pink is what we're talking about tonight. And this is the future land use or the concept plan, um, that is in the existing um, 1998 adopted um, Sunflower Army ammunition plant concept plan. And so that's the future less designations that are existing today. So this map shows that 1998 future land uses, but it also has all that gray area in there, and that, the gray area uh, indicates the land area that uh, the city of DeSoto annexed. And so that area is no longer in the county's zoning jurisdiction. And so um, so on this map, you can see, so on the right is showing the 1998 proposed future land use uh, for low-density residential. Uh, that density is a minimum of a two-acre lot size with adequate infrastructure. And then on the left side or the west side, um, is the 1998 proposed future land use, uh, rural residential. And it has a density of a minimum of three-acre lot size, also with adequate infrastructure. So um, so the subcommittee, uh, the Planning Commission's subcommittee that held those meetings and reviews, uh, proposed changes, um, the subcommittee's recommendation is that the existing uh, Sunflower plan uh, for this northwest area uh, be dissolved and that the remaining county land uh, be designated as rural policy area within the county's uh, future land use map or our policy area map. Um, and that, uh, just a reminder, that rural policy area maintains existing rural character uh, with limited residential development and a recommended density of one residence per 10 acres or greater. Uh, the reasons for the subcommittee recommendation is that the city of DeSoto has annexed over one-third of the land area recognized in that 1998 plan. Uh, the proposed rural policy area maintains the rural character. The rural policy area also reflects the current zoning, the existing conditions, density and land uses out in this area. It also maintains flexibility for potential uh, future city annexation and development. And so uh, so this uh, graphic shows what the proposed policy area map will look like uh, based on the subcommittee's recommendation. And so you can see the blue square, the blue outline, um, that's the study area or the planning area boundary. Um, that's what used to be pink, um, when I was showing you the current map. Uh, and so now you can see the um, that large gray area reflecting this city's recent annexation. But then now you see, you don't see pink designating an area plan. You see that yellow um, rural, rural policy area. And then um, this map just shows what the entire map will look like.
This is Chris Iliff, Chairman. If you'd just go back one slide.
Uh, sorry.
There we go.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the hatchmark, if you could describe what the hatchmark area is and the red dotted line areas are.
Mm-hmm.
That would be helpful.
Sure. Yeah. And um, uh, so as I mentioned earlier, our carnet plan is overlaid on this, on our policy area map. So the right, the red um, dotted line actually shows a carnet, carnet type. So we have different carnet types of road. We have a type one, type two, type three. This red dotted line is, shows a type three carnet designation. And then that kind of hatched area is a um, a study area um, designated for kind of a future study. Um, there's not been a study done in that area yet. Um, and um, if Brian wants to speak to that a little bit later, um, that's what he's here for. Um, but also notice that most of that study area is now, um, has now been annexed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Jim Neese, I got a quick question. A couple of the workshop questions. Uh, kind of alluded to this. One of them is, has carnet changed? Uh, has this changed the carnet plan? And uh, the map that you gave us this morning here, this afternoon, October 15th, those uh, lines that are in there as far as a carnet corridor study area, that doesn't look like that's changed any, does it?
No, those lines, the red dotted line, the study area line, the hatched area, those have not changed at all, uh, in, in terms of um, this plan update. Um, carnet has been in place for about 20 years now and uh, very minor changes to carnet over that time. So um, I'm getting close to wrapping up here, and then we can kind of move into more questions. But um, we just also wanted to share this map with you. This map is from Johnson County uh, Park and Recreation District. Um, and the uh, the point of this map is if you can see the yellow area, um, that uh, shows uh, land uh, to be uh, transferred to Parks and Rec for future uh, parkland. And so it just, it can also be able to provide a, a nice buffer in the future between um, kind of the county, county land and then yeah, um, development in the city. And so the amendments to the rural comprehensive plan, which is kind of the, the meat of what we're talking about here tonight. Um, so in order to implement the subcommittee's recommendation, uh, the following amendments to the comprehensive plan are needed. Uh, one is to revise the policy area map, which is map two, chapter two, uh, by removing those future land use designations that I showed earlier from the 1998 plan and replacing that land area with the rural policy area. Um, uh, to update chapter three, which is the area plans and to uh, update it and giving current information regarding um, this plan update. And, and also to provide some updates uh, regarding other area plans designated in our comprehensive plan. And then finally, then to remove that 1998 uh, Sunflower Army ammunition plant area plan from appendix F, and it would essentially be dissolved. So next steps, um, uh, is that the Planning Commission would uh, submit their final recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to be considered for final action. And then if the Planning Commission makes a final recommendation tonight, um, then it would be scheduled for the June 22nd Board of County Commission meeting for consideration. And then there's also um, a proposed motion, uh, if and when the Planning Commission wants to use that for reference. Um, and then I think at this point, I can stop for questions. And then just also to note that Brian Peedy with Public Works is here. If there's any additional questions about roads, carnet, et cetera.
This is Chris Iliff, Chairman. Uh, before we open it up for discussion uh, among the board members, uh, Mr. Peedy, if you would come up and talk about what you consider to be the most significant road changes and propositions with regard to carnet or other roads uh, over the next uh, 10 to 15 years.
So this is an area that carnet designated for future study, and Diane said it really well, that hashed area, that north-south connection. It's always contemplated that something's needed there, and the thought was, let's see what happens with the plan. And when that gets cleaned up, starts developing, then let's plan the road infrastructure system that needs to go in there. So I think uh, KDOT is trying to schedule a meeting right now to get the locals, meaning Edgerton, Gardner, Johnson County, Douglas County, DeSoto, get that group together and talk about that area. What, what types of developments are the cities seeing that, that might potentially annex and develop that area? What type of changes and road systems are going to be needed to connect to the plan? And significant to that would be that hashed area, that north-south route. In addition, KDOT is also looking at, you're almost scared to say it, the 21st century corridor, where, you know, they looked at a loop. I think they're going to be looking at that again. So in addition to the local system, a high-end facility that might connect up through Leavenworth, I-70, K-10 to 35, I think they're going to look at that again. So a lot of discussion and planning, I think, is going to occur, and this, this will take some time. This is probably at least a two-year activity of seeing what the developments are anticipated in that area. There's a lot of players and get their input and see what type of road infrastructure is going to be needed. So carnet contemplated this type of study at some point, and it's finally here.
Mr. Iliff, Chairman, uh, Mr. Peedy, are there meetings scheduled? Or uh, what groups are you planning to involve with regard to the potential design of roads in the area? potential design of roads in the area that, uh, is indicated on the map?
So nothing has been scheduled. It's really in its infancy. We haven't even gotten the group of these folks together to talk about what would the scope be? What, what would the purpose of the study and what would we like to do? I can tell you what my thoughts are. I think we need to figure out how the arterial road system is going to connect up with that plant area, Astrapark. What types of developments are going to be in there? What type of traffic volumes? Uh, what type of infrastructure is going to be needed to support that? Both east, west, nor, and south, north has pretty good connections. But there's nothing to the east, nothing to the south and nothing to the west. So it's just starting.
Yeah, I, I can tell you as a member of the subcommittee that, uh, were this area and had a number of meetings there that, uh, I, I think the, the biggest unanswered question is with regard to transportation and how you're going to move, uh, vehicles from one place to another. And, uh, so if you would consider maybe coming back to us every six months or so, letting us know what you're thinking and what the, uh, the group is thinking. I think that would be appreciated by all of the members of the planning commission.
Absolutely. I think, uh, the, the first good touch point would be when this group starts to put together what the scope is. What, what do we want to study? And, and I'll come back and let you know what their thoughts are there.
One of the questions that always popped up from looking for the comments are what about the roads? So the bottom line is what we're contemplating tonight and change of this plan does not affect any of the roads. And I know at the two meetings that was, that answers the question about what's going to happen and as well as the written comments. So I think the most important thing is, is that right now we don't know, but the plan before us and the changes that we're getting ready to now do not change carnet and do not change or have an answer to any of the road uh, questions that are automatically for that part of the deal. So that's just a point I want to make. And, uh, because I've had lots of comments about, uh, the roads, so.
I'm sure we all will. As time goes by. Thank you, Ms. Nice. Are there any of the questions, uh, for either Ms. Petey or, uh, Mr. Petey or, uh, Ms. Whitland?
Um, this is Kelly Grass. Yes, I have some questions. Um, I appreciate all that's gone on to this with the subcommittee and everything. They've done a great job. But one area that I'm not sure has been brought up and maybe even the public or landowners have thought about, and I just wanted to kind of get clarification because I'm still trying to figure it all out too or clarify it. With going to the rural, if I'm a 10-acre property owner and also coming from a zoning board member, property owner rights are very important. Um, if I'm a 10-acre property owner, do I now lose my right to subdivide to like a two to three acre residential lot? Even though I go through all the right processes, is that being taken away?
Um, I'll start an answer and if Jane and Sean want to add in on, on that. Um, I, I would say no, we're not taking anybody's rights away. So, so all land out in the county has zoning, right? And so, uh, the majority, not all, um, especially out in this area has, has rural zoning. That's a zoning district, rural zoning district that has a 10-acre minimum. If a landowner wants to, um, s- subdivide and say they have the rural zoning, they want to subdivide, they want to go under, uh, 10 acres, then they have to petition or apply to rezone. And then that's a public hearing process. Um, and, and if you, you well know, so then they would make application to rezone. They go to a, the zoning board, uh, zoning board makes a recommendation of approval or denial of that rezoning. Um, and then it goes on to the board of county commissioners for a final answer. Um, so, uh, one, one piece, so we look at a, a golden criteria, uh, which came out of a lawsuit. And one, one of those criteria is looking at a city or a county, uh, comprehensive plan. And so this is just one of the elements that we would look at when somebody wants to rezone. So it's kind of a whole public hearing process. So, um.
I guess just to interrupt since you just brought that up, um, Kelly Grass. My, I guess the concern would be this allows the county or the B O C C to always default back. So if a property owner came through, has 10 acres, wants to subdivide to two or three, um, they go through all the proper steps and requirement. And there's really no other rationale that it shouldn't be done. The B O C C or whatever could just always fall back and say, well, this is the, the plan. They could use that as a rationale to say no, which is a little concerning, um, regarding Trump being a property rights owner if there's no other rationale. I'm just, I just want to clarify, is that, am I thinking that correctly?
Well, so, uh, you know, like I said earlier, so there's kind of a collection of things that we look at specifically for rezoning. One is the comprehensive plan. One is existing, uh, zoning surrounding the subject property. The existing uses.
So they would have to, uh, Kelly, they would have to have more than just that rationale.
That's exactly right.
And that's just I want to have on record tonight to, you know, definitely protect property owners that are out there because some of these property owners may not have thought of this yet because they haven't gone through the process. They don't know what the process means and this hasn't come up in any of the discussions. So, um, as far as the public, so just on record that, you know, the, like you said, there's more things, being a zoning board member myself, understanding that there are several things, criterias that need to be looked at that all of those criterias will be taken in to place, not just if this plan gets passed.
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct. And I don't know if Jay or Sean want to add to that, but.
Uh, and maybe Lindsay Garcia, just as a follow-up question. Is there a place where that kind of statement or philosophy is written down into a regulation somewhere? So that it's codified as opposed to just spoken in a public, you know, planning commission meeting, but is there a reason why that's not either in this plan or is it in a separate document?
But let me, uh, if I could.
Okay, or they could answer too.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll certainly let anyone, uh, from the staff to, uh, enter in here. Um, in 25 years or so on the, uh, Aubrey Township Zoning Board, we had a number of, uh, less than 10 acre subdivisions that came before us. Uh, and they were in the rural, uh, traditional, uh, area at the time. Uh, and, uh, we had a number of criteria that we looked at, uh, one of which was, uh, as you say, codified, and that is the golden case, the golden criteria. Those are the things that you look at. So it's not a matter of arbitrary, um, action on the part of the, uh, the Board of County Commissioners or anyone else. Uh, there are limitations, uh, with regard to what anyone can do with regard to limiting someone's subdividing of their property. Uh, and those things include, you know, environmental concerns with regard to the number, amount of acres with regard where there's no sewers and that sort of thing. But, uh, yeah, I, I think that, uh, there is a very well-established limits or parameters with regard to what, um, any regulatory body can do with regard to a person who wants to subdivide their property.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Penley, kind of plan staff, that's absolutely correct. As the chairman indicated, the, the golden criteria is outlined expressly in the zoning regulations. That is the criteria that we use to consider any land use, land use action. So in the regulations, there are, there is an outline for actors to consider for land use and zoning changes. And that's correct. As chairman indicated, the golden criteria, we look at, uh, the comprehensive plan, future guide. Look at minimum infrastructure requirements, surrounding land uses, surrounding zoning. You know, there are often times when we have to look at these, it's a case-by-case basis with every application. Every site, ma- maybe the east side of this northwest area is a little bit different than the west side. We're going to look at everything surrounding that and that's all outlined in the regulations specifically. But this is a, one of those components, the land use plan. We factor in everything else with zoning and infrastructure and all of that.
The only thing Commissioner Jay Leipzig that I would add to that, I think was well, well spoken by everyone. It's just this is also, um, prescribed by state statute as well, not just our zoning regulations, state statute for the zoning, uh, for the, for the golden criteria.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, I think maybe my question, and, and maybe it's not necessary, but a lot of times when I've seen something where it would say nothing in these regulations is intended to modify or supple, you know, uh, abrogate the requirements of the golden rules or something like that. I g- I wasn't sure where this played in with the golden criteria. And so I just wasn't sure if the, this could be read as an exception to that rule, um, and, uh, you know, you're shaking your head's not. And I, I would hope that that's the case. I was just curious if there was a reason why we wouldn't clarify that in the regulation.
This is just simply, um, going to the comprehensive plan and, and relooking at the future land uses that set forth in the comp plan, those golden criteria reference the comp plan. So this is just touching one thing that the comprehensive plan does. I will also point out that, um, another important part of the golden criteria is recommendation of professional planning staff, which the zoning board gets that every time through our staff report. Um, and for the board of county commissioners and the zoning board to consider. And also the, uh, subcommittee spent a lot of time looking at the infrastructure in the study area. And we had all of those infrastructure providers, um, either talked to planning staff who reported back or the actual departments came and talked about the infrastructure. So really in this area, that is a very important part and that's one reason why right now it's 10-acre zoning, R U R zoning. Um, and when you look at residential zoning, you need a lot more infrastructure.
Yes, Kelly Grass, and yes, I appreciate all those answers and that's the clarification I wanted, that it was still open for discussion. I mean, being on the Southeast Zoning Board, we look at that golden criteria quite a lot, but then there's always the, you know, if we really, planning staff really recommends something, they do always say, well, we have to grow, we have to look at the next step. So that's always part of it. There's always, like you said, a lot of variables and conversations that go into it. So my only, you know, for the record is make sure that these conversations stay open. The property owner does have the, the rights and all aspects are looked at no different than what I've experienced being on the zoning board. So, thank you.
Any other further discussion or comments or questions for the planning staff? If not, the, uh, staff has recommended that we, in addition to considering and discussing the information gathered at the public hearing and the reports that were given here tonight, um, that we forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. And, um, any, uh, comments on that, Mr. Leipzig?
Mr. Chairman, just to open the, um, comments up for the public that we should speak as well.
All right. Um, let us open this now to members of the public for comments. Hearing nothing, we will now close the public hearing and, and move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nice.
Uh, I would like to suggest a motion. Um, and then I move that the planning commission recommended the board of county commissioners adoption of the attached amendments to the comprehensive plan regarding, among other things, resolving the 1998 sunflower ammunition plant area plan and annexing the remaining county land as rural policy area within the county policy area map.
Thank you, Ms. Nice. Is there a second to the, Mr. Nice's motion?
Randy Downing, second.
Downing has seconded the motion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Then the, uh, motion, uh, will be moved on to the Board of County Commissioners for their consideration. Thank you, Ms. Nice. And Mr. Downey, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is the New Century Air Center and Executive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, uh, Michelle Crooks with Johnson County Planning. And this evening I'm just going to provide a quick update to our ongoing airport land use compatibility updates for both, uh, Johnson County Executive Airport and New Century Air Center. Uh, so just to kind of bring everyone up to date, although I, I do talk about this a lot, I still like to just kind of pull everything back together. Um, this effort was kicked off last summer, um, when, um, a request for proposal was issued to update the land use compatibility airports for, our plans for both airports. Um, the, uh, land's compatibility plans for these airports are part of the rural comprehensive plan. So, uh, they are, um, appendices, uh, within that plan. So in October of 2022, uh, the first planning advisory committee meeting and the public information workshops were held. Uh, those meetings included the intent of this planning effort, uh, the existing land use conditions around the airport and how much development has occurred, uh, over a 20-year period. In February of 2023, we held a second planning advisory committee meeting and a second, uh, series of workshops uh, for each airport. Uh, we also held a developer stakeholder meeting where we pulled the developers together to have a, a good conversation with them. Um, and kind of hear, uh, what their concerns are, kind of maybe some of their frustrations as they're trying to develop around the airport and, um, uh, work through that. Um, in that time, um, noise, updated noise contours for the airports were, uh, provided. We discussed wildlife hazards, uh, regarding developing near airports. Uh, each airport's flight tracks, uh, were presented and we talked about, um, what the, um, process to go through, um, take a project through the airport commission. We walked through that process as well. So, um, as of May 16th, we just completed our third round. We had another, um, public information workshop. We held another set of meetings. And so this is, uh, the process, kind of where we are at this point, that big red arrow shows our, shows our third point. So if you are on Johnson County's, um, any of Johnson County's social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Nextdoor, you may have seen over the last four weeks, um, advertisements for public information workshops for the executive airport and for, um, the, uh, New Century Air Center. So just in front of you real quick, just showed you what the, uh, um, social media outreach looked like for our executive airport. And this is the one for the New Century Air Center. They're different just to kind of have them pop so they didn't look like they were together, draw the interest. So the efforts of the social media outreach, um, were really engaging. Uh, just this is kind of a quick, uh, guideline here shows what those numbers were that we got from the county manager's office. Um, we had Facebook ads, we had outreach. So between the, the ad reached, uh, for the executive airport, reached over 3,700 people and reached, uh, for total for all the posts, reached over 9,200 people. We had over 4,200 reached through Twitter efforts. We had, um, over 700 through Instagram and then we reached 57 neighborhoods through Nextdoor. And you'll see like through, uh, New Century Air Center too, we had those really the same, um, that same level engagement. We also had, um, the support of Overland Park, Oletha and Gardner as they shared our posts uh, within their pages as well, as well. And, um, so did, uh, New Century Air, or New Century Air Center. So the projects that go to the board of county commissioners are projects that are originating in the city um, that, um, are within one mile of the airport. And Kansas State statute, uh, requires that those projects are reviewed by the airport commission for land use compatibility. So we are reviewing those applications of regarding like future land use maps, currently population density, height, wildlife hazards, noise-sensitive land uses, impacts a project may have to aircraft and pilot. All those projects get reviewed such as rezonings, preliminary and final development plans, final, uh, preliminary and final plats and special or conditional use permits. And those projects do not go before the airport commission until they receive final approval by the city. This, uh, one-mile statutory is pursuant to Kansas statute to go, um, through this process. I do want to note that in the unincorporated lands that are within one mile, do not go through the same process. They still go through our zoning board, they still go to the board of county commissioners, but they do not go to the airport commission. However, we do send the airport staff, we send them the project. staff, we send them the project so they can review and make comments on it. And that, they provide comments that'll then become part of the public record. So this before you is the current future land use maps in both the New Century Air Center compatibility plan and for Executive Airport. These are very outdated. They're based on future land uses. And the new century was done in 96, Executive Airports was in 2004. They're both very outdated. And these future land uses over when we, or when we get these projects from the city and we are reviewing their proposal to the future land uses over time, those land uses between the county and the city, they no longer agree with those land uses. And this has created some conflict. And the county doesn't have authority to tell the cities and direct the cities on their future land use needs. So now we're kind of at this point of trying to update our compatibility plans for these airports. So we can have, so we can go move forward to those remaining lands that are available for development. So this was one of our graphics presented at our second round of meetings. And this is the arrival of flight tracks for New Century Air Center. So the light pink tracks are actual incoming flights for a period of November 21st to December 2nd of 2022. So each of the lighter lines are individual aircraft that actually landed at New Century Air Center. Consequently, on the website, there are departure flight tracks out there and there helicopter flight tracks. But for sake of just presentation, I just grabbed this one for you. So the darker line actually represents the average flight path to each runway. So it kind of gets pulled into a singular spine to show kind of where those average flight paths are. They're not going to always follow the same line, but they're going to be pretty close to each other. So we can kind of pull something together. So based on the previous slide, this is a proposed concept that we are going, that we are proposing to address land use compatibility around the airport. So rather than use, using a future land use designation, which as I've previously led over time can create some conflict with compatibility plans, we are tying our concept directly back to airport operations. So these safety zones are directly tied to those flight tracks. This concept for land use compatibility has actually been used in California for some time. They are required to do land use compatibility plans with their airports. So this is a concept that's been used in California for several years. This concept has been embraced by the FAA and has actually been part of their most recent land use compatibility advisory circular that was updated just the end of last year. So you'll notice here that there are six safety zones ranging from the most protected area, which is zone one, which is called also the runway protection zone out to one, out to zone six. That is that light blue area and that encompasses out to the one mile buffer area. And then sorry, I hit my keyboard. So consequently, this would be the executive airport's flight tracks. And then here's the proposed safety area for the executive airport.
Excuse me, I've got a quick question. What's your definition of a buffer area?
The buffer area is the one mile area outside from the airport boundary, out one mile. That is defined by Kansas State statute. We're calling that kind of the buffer area.
What does that?
That's part of our, that's our review area.
Does, are there any restrictions? At all?
That's what this is, this is addressing those land use, kind of depending on what zone we're in. There's going to be a matrix and I'll get to this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll get to this here in a little bit. So this, these are the safety zone concepts. We have our runway protection zone, that's zone one, that is sacred protected area defined by the FAA. It's such a trapezoidal area, starting 200 feet off the end of the runway where the FAA wants no development, no roads, no parking, no development at all, except anything that's going to support air traffic flying into an airport. We have our outer approach departure zone, our inner turning zone, our outer approach departure sideline, and then the airport influence area is the remaining one mile area. But all this is tied back to specifically how aircraft fly in and out of an airport and use that runway.
Ms. Cricks, a quick question to mimic Mr. Nice here. And that is, what does the airport influence area mean with regard to property owners?
So what we'll have, and it'll be tied back to these safety zones, is a land use matrix where we'll have residential densities, recommended residential densities, resident or recommended non-residential densities, possibly recommended uses, recommended prohibited uses, and any other maybe conditional uses that would be maybe permitted within that area. We're looking at this, any project that comes before the Airport Commission, we're looking at it purely as a, from a point of view as, is this compatible with the airport? Is it too tall? Does it have any retention basins where water's standing where it'll attract wildlife? Will it create a radio frequency? Will it be an area, is it located close to the airport runway and it's a use where people convalesce? Are people trying to, is it a hospital or is it a daycare center? Is it another place of education? Is it a place of worship? Those are sensitive land uses and we're going to look at it from that point of view as well. Hopefully by the time it's getting to the Airport Commission, staff has been working with the applicant, staff has been working to, with the city, so we can kind of work together and come up with a project that we can not worry about what the city's future land use says, but we'll have a matrix to support what the cities are wanting to propose.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Penn, the planning staff, I'll just add to what Michelle said. These, the airport compatibility plans we have today do follow this state statute. So the one mile area, that's the airport influence area, essentially the one mile boundary, Michelle referred to as a buffer. It's a buffer from the airport property. So within one mile, all applications, all city planning and zoning applications are subject to this review. We've been doing this for 20 plus years. This update will change the way we review these applications. So we've always been working with cities and applicants in these places. This approach will be a different way of handling those with respect to the airport compatibility. But we're doing it today. This is the one mile review from the airports. And it's just a different way of approaching it. We've been letting, you know, as part of this whole advisory committee and our, the committee meetings we've been having, we've been getting input, as Michelle noted, from city representatives, airport commissioners and, and planning commissioners on that subcommittee. It's, it's been a good approach. It's just a different way of looking at it. But we're doing this today. This will be a different way of considering all these different factors for airport compatibility.
Commissioner Garcia, just curious, are the factors going to be listed in this plan? So we can, you know, I just wasn't sure if there was just going to be a generic or would the regulations actually that we look at call out, what are your considerations when in the kind of large airport influence area?
There'll be a matrix tied to each of these safety zone areas. And it'll say, you know, safety zone area one and lay that out. Safety zone two, which is our inner approach, we'll lay that out. And there'll be, there'll be guidelines. As you know, all of our planning applications are always going to be case by case. So we have to take a look at all that, but it provides a guideline and it provides a guideline to developers. It provides a guideline to the cities. It provides a guideline to staff that this is kind of, this would be a use, a development, a structure that will not interfere with our airports.
Yeah, Chairman Garcia, or I was just, or Commissioner Garcia, I just wanted to make sure I understood if that was going to be in the regulations or is that just something that your staff would follow?
No, there is, the website, the project website, which I'll give it here at the very end, has a, has these, has a copy of these boards which were presented at the public workshop and presented to the planning advisory committee meeting.
Commissioner Garcia, J. Leipzig, I think I was going to mention is both of these plans will be adopted as part of our conference plan as well. So there will be a separate chapter for each airport plan update.
Jim, the question I have is, since I've flown in a lot of different airports, there there are more suggestions, they're not restrictions. In other words, if you look, you know, yeah, not flying in and out of executive, it's a heck of a lot different than going in New Century because of surrounding ground. So if I, if I want to have some kind of a development within this mile range of, of New Century, are there going to be restrictions that say you can't have a housing development or you can't have a building? Yeah, I know you've got, you've got the FAA rules on heights, what's there? I mean, they're, you're not going to change those. But when you talk about an area out like this, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just kind of curious. You got, you look at the map on executive here and, and the approach to three, five, I mean, there are buildings right up to the, to the overfly area. And you look at Gardner and you've got, if you fly into St. Louis, you've got factories, houses, daycare centers and everybody else right up to that, closer than a mile. So I guess my question is this. Is the one mile going to be restricted by specific zoning regulations or going to be a suggestion to what would happen?
Well, just to clarify, any zoning within the city is by the city. We don't have authority over how the cities are going to regulate their future land use or their zoning designation. We don't have authority in that area. What we're looking to do is to ensure that what the cities, what, what they're, what developers are working with and what development they're proposing, regardless if it's residential, regardless if it's commercial, a four story building, is it going to interfere with our airport? And this is why we're doing away with that land use, that future land use maps that are currently in. We're proposing to do away with that and coming up with something that's going to give some guidelines. So regardless of what type of land use is being proposed, we'll have maybe some supported densities that would be compatible closer to the airport, maybe not as dense, maybe not high density residential, but maybe single family residential that's, you know, maybe along the side there, that's currently there. And it's, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for county, city, developers to have this conversation and actually have some guidelines out where we don't have guidelines now.
Commissioner Nice, Sean Penn, it's a great question. This came up at the last planning advisory committee meeting. As Michelle indicated, these are not regulate, these are not zoning regulations because the cities have the zoning regulations. These, this, think of this just like with our land use policy for the comprehensive plan. This is part of the rural comprehensive plan. This is, these are policies, land use policies for the airports. No, they're not zoning regulations, although we did try, I think the, the first time around to include a, a chapter in zoning regulations for an overlay. They're not officially adopted in the cities. Cities have their own zoning regulations, but these will be land use policies around the airport. So they're the guide for what development should occur. Cities still have their zoning, but that zoning does have to be approved by the county. So we, we take it all into consideration. So this is just one of those factors to consider. When an application comes before the Airport Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, they're going to look at the compatibility with these adopted plans to see, does it fit? No, we can't restrict it from any development, but we would have, this would be a major factor in consideration for approval. It's a, it's a land use policy.
The only other item I was going to mention, Jay Leipzig, is this, the, the concepts that are proposed in this plan, it's, it's basing, rather than, than restrict something entirely on land use and a future land use map the city has, which frankly, you know, that, that may, land use types might change. This is more oriented towards the density of development. So it gives that, it's just a different way of looking at it. There again, based on the overall operation of the airport and the safety and how it affects the airport.
This is Chris Ilof. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to the airport plan?
I just have a couple more things, if that's okay.
It's fine.
So our next steps, planning staff is scheduling our meetings with each city to continue discussing this proposed concept and go through the matrix. We've already met with the city of Gardner and gotten some great, great feedback from them. We meet with the city of Oletha this Friday, and then we're meeting with Oval and Park in June. So those meetings have already been set. We will be holding a second developer stakeholder meeting to talk to them about this, to see what their thoughts are. We will schedule a fourth planning advisory committee meeting and public workshops probably around the end of July, first of August. That's all tentative at this point. And then there of course is our project study website and the beautiful spark code. So if there's anybody who happens to be watching online or watches later, they can just scan this and they'll take them straight to the website where has all of the boards that we've presented and the public is all there, including what was presented tonight. There's draft chapters one and two for each airport. And there's a public comment interface there too as well. That's so the, they submit a comment through the website, drop right into my email. That concludes my update.
Thank you, Ms. Cricks. I appreciate it. Let me comment and compliment the staff with regard to the QR codes. I think they're a great way to save a lot of paper for people who are interested in getting real detail and you can put them up on a computer screen and expand them about as big as you need. And so I really do appreciate the QR codes. I think they're a great way to look at reports and to be better informed, not only for members of our board, but for members of the public in general. It's a great idea. Any further questions or comments for planning staff on the airport? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is updates and other business. And the first item is the update on the Board of County Commissioners action.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Leipzig, Planning Director. One thing I was going to note, it, I was actually going to mention at a different part of the agenda, but it, it flows in nicely with what you just, your comments about the QR codes. I wanted to recognize we have a, a planning intern that is finishing up her year with us. Zoe Brown is sitting back there. Many of you know Zoe, Zoe. But we do appreciate Zoe's work. She's been with us for, for a year and it was her idea to come up with this, this QR code concept. So she's, Karen, I'll give credit as well for Karen, but anyway, it's just, she's been a great, great asset to us and I certainly appreciate the work that she's done. Finishing up her, her year with us and then she'll move on to Shawnee County or MHCC. So she's been a great resource for us. Okay, the, the other items to, to present to you, wanted to mention that the zoning regulation amendments for accessory structures was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on April 27th, 2023. There was also a committee, the whole meeting on April 27th, 2023 to discuss the consolidation of the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board and the Northwest Consolidated Zoning Board together. I've been speaking to several of the zoning boards, visited the southeast as well as the northwest. We make a presentation to the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board tomorrow evening. However, there, the, the Board of County Commissioners set a public hearing to discuss this item on June 15th at 9:30 a.m. in, in this building, in this room. So further discussion on that. But I did, and it would still keep, it would be a 12 member planning commission and then a seven member would be a East Consolidated Consolidated Zoning Board and a seven member West Consolidated Zoning Board. With that, if you have any questions you might have, I have presented this material a couple of times to folks as well. So happy to answer other questions that may all have.
I just have a question. So what prompted this? Is it just because there's not a need for so many zoning boards or what?
Thank you, Commissioner. I should have mentioned that. Yes, essentially what, what prompted that is the need, the, the Northwest Zoning Board, I believe, last year met seven, seven times or six times. And so, especially with the annexation with the Sunflower area, it just thinking that, that it would be a way to it just thinking that that it would be a way to equalize some of that. So yeah, that that zoning board is not met very often at all. And even even the last time we met, we did not have a an application, but we did want to present the information to them.
Any questions for Mr. Leipzig?
Roger Mason question. Are you the there'll be two boards, this seven and seven. Do those seven make up the planning commission then? Or is that a different? What's the interlayer in a relationship with that?
Yes, Commissioner Mason, we do have, and I can tell you the there's a there's a proposed nomination process for planning commission where two members would be nominated from the first district and the fourth district. And those would be from a city or the incorporated area. And then the chair would also nominate one person from the city. And then there would be two members or nominated by, excuse me, yeah, two, two members nominated by the second district and two from the fifth district. And then three from the sixth district, three from the third district. Then the chair would nominate two from the unincorporated area. So and I'd be happy to send this this presentation out as well. I believe that is also on the Board of County Commissioners web or the Johnson's website as well. But it kind of outlines a little bit of that that summary for you.
Commissioner Mason, I can add to that too, as Jay mentioned, the the composition will still remain the same as following state statutes. It would be three members from the incorporated area in cities and then nine members from the unincorporated area. You'll still have the same composition in that respect. The only difference would be how they're appointed, how they're nominated and appointed. That's the only difference really. Otherwise, they still keep the same 12 member planning commission. It'd just be a breakdown as far as how they're nominated and selected.
Commissioner Garcia, just curious, why is there a change to how they're nominated and appointed?
That, Mr. Garcia can have if Bob Ford is available, Ryan Haga. My understanding is because of the 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 consolidation of the zoning boards, we had to do have make some changes in terms of nomination process to planning commission. And that was why. That's the short answer.
If there are questions of Mr. Leipzig? If not, the director's report?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. The other item I wanted to briefly go through is just topics for our our June 27th, 2023 meeting. That is our election of officers. That was our our annual meeting prescribed by our bylaws. We also have our annual comprehensive plan review. That be that evening as well. And then one additional thing we wanted to bring before the board is is some chain slight change in the wording for the accessory structures regulations that was just recently adopted by the Board of County Commissioners concerning grandfathering of those uses and how they are amortized out. And when they go back before the the planning commission, we have some proposed language that we wanted to bring before the planning commission to help kind of clarify that language and what that means. And then so those three things, the other thing we wanted to talk about and 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 mention is the our building official, Arneesh Farpor, met with some of the local fire districts as well as the water districts to talk about the water requirements in the rural area and and what type of alternatives might be available for those property owners to give the maximum flexibility. But at the same time, ensure that the structures are safe and there's adequate water, fire flow to put out those without a fire in case there one exists. So staff was was getting to look at that. We met with our Commissioner Almren and Commissioner O'Hara to discuss that issue and just very preliminary to let them know that we were at least going to be studying it and addressing it. We're like to bring forward a recommendation to you in the future. I don't think that will be in June. Certainly, I think it probably will be probably later on in the summer. I anticipate probably perhaps August when that matters presented. We'll have the the fire chief present and he'll provide some additional information to you as well, as well as our building official on that on that item.
This is Commissioner Rass. So yeah, I'm with bringing that up because like I remember only because I knew about because we had looked at property. But a couple of months ago, Southeast Zoning Board went ahead and approved that development on the south side of 183rd street or whatever. And at one point we had looked at that house and we knew there was water issues. Plus I knew the people who own the barn on the north side. So is that going to be something that's what's going to be discussed because they have, they don't have water last time I knew. I mean, I knew they had a cistern and was hauling water in for the horse barn.
That would be one of the issues that were
Yeah, because I even brought that up at the development. I'm like, are you going to let these homeowners know there may not be water?
Correct.
But that's going to be something. Okay.
Those are the type of issues, whether a
That's a great idea.
In terms of providing a fire flow, if there's an adequate pond and a dry hydrant, the pump that could pump water to put out a fire or something should
Yeah, because if we remember the that barn, one of those barns burned down, they lost six horses. So it's kind of an issue.
This is Commissioner Garcia. I was just curious about a year ago, the Board of Zoning Appeals had issued a ruling and had asked the planning staff to look at some issues regarding notice and making sure that landowners had adequate notice of proposed conditional use permits. I was curious if there was any updates or efforts made in that area.
Mr. Garcia, yes, there has been. However, I I will need to refresh my memory on that. I will certainly make a note of that. There was a kind of a determination from legal staff. Unless Karen or Sean wants to speak to it, but I could bring that back to you after we after we've looked at that.
Sean Pendley, planning staff, I don't recall if we got an official update from legal staff, but staff, planning staff did discuss this with legal. What we're following, there's no change. There's been no change to the official notification process. We're following state statutes in terms of that. So all land use applications we have for zoning and CUPs, any proposed change to land use would require a notice of 1,000 feet from the subject propping that's following state statutes. There's no other change to that to be consistent with state statutes.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, I think I think the question was is that the state statute set out minimum notice requirements, not maximum. And I think the Board of Zoning Appeals had thought and I think kind of stated that for certain conditional use permits that maybe have noise, odor, light, yeah, traffic, that maybe those type of conditional use permits may there may be an indication that you could expand out that thousand foot, you know, because that could you could have a conditional use that would impact further than 1,000 feet.
Commissioner Garcia, Jay Leipzig, again, we can report back to you on that because there was some some details of things we we that we did talk about and we the other, the next step is our terms of our updates we've done at the subdivision audit that we completed, we've been the updates, the airport plans. The next step would be a an updating toward toward zoning and subdivision regulations, which will include that type of language as well. But there was some particular requirements that that they brought up and some additional research want to bring bring back before you.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Leipzig or any other member of the staff who's here? If not, I will announce that the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting is Tuesday, June 27th, 2023 at 5:45 p.m. Do I hear a motion for adjournment? Ms. Rass? It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.